So we're ready to go whenever you are.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get started. That works. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll call to order the Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, Meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And then we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I don't know if anybody's got a flag there, but I'll ask us all to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Carl. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I just have to need to figure out how to do that in a more flattering way for all of us on our Zoom screens. So, Michelle, next item on our agenda is roll call.
All right, Kathleen Turner. Or Taylor, sorry. Kathleen Taylor. Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins. Ed, can you unmute, please? Okay, Ed is here. He's just muted. Paulo Levis is absent. Alex Velto.
Here.
And Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Did you call everybody's name?
I'm sorry. Oh, John Marshall. I thought I called you. I'm sorry.
I'm not here. I'm here.
You are here. I see.
Okay, next item is item pub, item three, public comment. For a public comment on any action item or any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
Yes, I do. I have Sarah Raichman registered to speak on this item.
Okay.
We're trying to find her. Just one moment, please. Hang on, we're having a little bit of difficulty. Just one moment. Do we have Sarah on the line? Doesn't look like it. Okay, it doesn't look like Sarah is logged in, so I have no other request to speak for this item.
Okay. Well, keep us posted. If she logs back in, we'll want to make sure we put that together for the later public comment.
Sounds good.
So move on to item four, approval of the minutes. We'll start with the minutes from Reno City Planning Commission meeting on May 20th, 2020.
Commissioner Hawkins, move to approve.
Peter Gower, second. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Hawkins and a second from Commissioner Gower. We'll do a roll call vote on this, just to make sure. So I'll ask for you by name. So I'll start with Commissioner Hawkins.
Commissioner Hawkins, yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Gower.
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall.
Yes.
Commissioner Velto.
Yes.
Commissioner Levis.
Commissioner Levis, that's right. I came on just as you were starting to set up.
No problem. So we're looking at the minutes from May 20th.
Yes.
And Commissioner Johnson, also aye. Okay, motion passes on that. Minutes approved. Now I'm looking for a motion on the minutes for June 4th, 2020. Peter Gower, move to approve. Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Have a motion.
Commissioner Taylor, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Have a motion, a second. Once again, the roll call. Commissioner Hawkins.
Commissioner Hawkins, aye, yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Gower.
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall.
Yes.
Commissioner Velto.
Yes.
And Commissioner Levis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Johnson, also aye. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on on the agenda. Next item is public hearings. We will start with item 5.1. I have to recuse myself from this item as the applicant, the firm that I work for, is employed by the applicant on a separate project, so I will be recusing myself from this item. And we'll turn it over to Commissioner Taylor to open and ask that Michelle remove me from the live meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to open the hearing for case number LDC 2000047 Gateway Parkway Complex Skyway. And I believe we have a presentation from the applicant.
I'm going to step in real quick while the applicant is getting connected to the meeting. I wanted to give you guys an update on where we were at with the text amendment. At your May 20th meeting, the Planning Commission voted to, what would be the word, to not recommend to delete the Design Review Committee from the Skyway's design guidelines. And that recommendation was forwarded to council at their June 10th meeting. They revised the text amendments. It will be going back to council for a first reading and second reading in July and August. The outcome of that is they wanted to keep the Design Review Committee. However, they carved out what I would call a three criteria. So any project that meets these three criteria would be exempt from the Design Review Committee. Those criteria included Skyways that have a maximum height or width of 12 feet wide and height of 15 feet tall. Also, that included any Skyway that is located outside of the downtown Reno Regional Center plan boundary and any Skyway that spans more than two travel lanes from a public roadway. So all three of those criteria, if met, would, the Skyway project would not have to go before a Design Review Committee. Again, that was a first reading because it was drastically different from the first reading that went, that was noticed, which was to remove the Design Review Committee. They will be going back and hearing it again on their July 22nd city council meeting. That will be a first reading. And then later in August, they'll hear a second reading. So just for clarification for everyone, that's kind of the outcome of where we're at on the text amendment, how it impacts the case before you today. This is a special use permit. There is a condition tied to the special use permit that says that this special use permit is contingent on the approval of the Skyway Design Guidelines text amendment. So if for some reason, that text amendment does not move forward as it has been proposed thus far to council, then it would require that this project has to come back to Planning Commission for review. And so that would be, from a process point of view, something that the applicant has chosen at this point to move forward with. And keep in mind, too, that at your last Planning Commission meeting, you continued the special use permit. Based on our zoning code, the continuance is good for 30 days. So the special use permit has to come back to Planning Commission within 30 days. This marks that 30-day Planning Commission meeting. So you have kind of two options at this point. You can ask the applicant if they would like to continue this agenda item again. It is up to the applicant if they choose to agree to a continuance or not. If they don't want to agree to a continuance, then you will have to make a motion on this agenda item. This is a special use permit that is just a recommendation by Planning Commission. You will not be final decision. City Council is the final decision on this special use permit. So in terms of just process, wanted to give you a heads up of where things stand and kind of what the next steps are for you guys. Carl Hall from Legal is also here. If you guys had questions for him on the process before we get started.
Thank you, Angela. So would now be the appropriate time to ask the applicant if they're interested in a continuance, or do we go forward with our presentation?
Carl, did you want to weigh in on that? You're muted, yep.
Now would be the time to ask the applicant if they want a continuance.
Okay, so I guess we'll ask the applicant if that's something that they're interested in doing at this time.
Yes.
We are currently not interested in the continuance at this time.
Okay, so here now, I guess we move forward with the presentation. Okay, Michelle, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. You have 15 minutes to present. Francisco.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Correct this so I actually go into presentation mode from last time. There you go. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give this brief update to you on this presentation regarding the special use permit request for the University of Nevada Reno Gateway Precinct Skyway Pedestrian Bridge. Again, joining me today on behalf of the design team, we have Christopher Cox, UNR Project Manager, Heidi Ganser, UNR Executive Director of External Relations, Michelle Wendler, WD Architecture and Engineering, Principal in Charge in our Architective Record, and I'm Francisco Navarro, WD Architecture and Engineering Project Manager. As noted in our last presentation, this project is part of UNR's master plan that was adopted by the Board of Regents in December of 2014 and then adopted by the city in April of 2016. The master plan itself had looked at many solutions to the ADA connection for the Gateway precinct to the main campus, and a bridge was the most viable solution. UNR is proud of the architectural context of its campus and has a rigorous standard to follow to meet its expectations. Our project was no exception to this. Early on, we had various meetings, presented options, and received feedback from various UNR staff departments, including Facility Services, Security, Campus Architect, culminating with review and approval by President Mark Johnson. This rigorous design review process has resulted in UNR receiving many awards over the years, both for building design and its grounds. The feedback that we got led us to the design that we're presenting today, a design that respects the landscape and the grounds and is within the architectural vocabulary of the rest of the campus. Here's a view of some of the few samples that inspired us in the Gateway Garage and the ADA Accessible Skyway, from the campus, the base brick colors, the stone accents and the banding, from historical railways, the open steel truss frame of bridges, and the curved roofs of the trains. The main goal of our bridge is to provide an ADA accessible pathway from the Gateway precinct to the main campus via the new garage. The materials that we've selected are consistent with the design of the new parking structure and UNR's campus context and architectural palette. The design of the ADA Accessible Skyway Bridge is an open steel truss frame with a curved roof, covered walkway reminiscent of historical railway bridges, and provides protection both from the elements and allows for visibility from a safety standpoint. In the image here on the right is the site plan that we had presented before. The bottom here, you can see the garage is located at the bottom right. The highlighted in yellow area is the ADA Bridge crossing Ninth Street. To the left is an enlarged plan. And as you can see, we're depicting here the 34-degree rotated layout, which we carefully placed to minimize the impact to the existing mature trees on site. And as you can see, the bridge ends north of the Orditch and south of the existing walkway, roughly about 150 feet away from Morale Hall, as shown in the blue at the top. The red dash is the continuance and shows where the pathway from the bridge will connect to the existing campus promenade. As presented from before, here are some views along Ninth Street. This view is from the Center Street side. This is the Ninth Street view looking back from Lake Street side. Here is a view that we added to represent how the bridge will end at the very top of the hill. This view is looking back from the steps of Morale Hall, and as shown, we are trying to minimize the impact to the existing trees and the view that you get. This view here is looking towards Morale Hall from the top of the bridge. This is the view that you would see as you exit the bridge looking north. Here's an image that we had presented in the last presentation, which is the night view, and this is the view from Center Street with the accent lights. And as you can see, the see-through and the visibility of the walkway itself over the street. These are the three elevations that we had presented last time. And as we had discussed, the 10-foot bridge itself that is covered with the curved roof to provide the accessible walkway over the street. To the south, the clearance from the pedestrian, from the public roadway is 20 feet 4 inches. And the north end is 18 foot 7. Below are the two adjacent spans as the bridge makes its way up towards the top of the hill over the Orditch. And now I'd like to invite Heidi Ganser, who will speak to our closing statement summary. If you can allow Heidi to speak.
Thank you. I think you've got me now. All right. So I want to thank you for hearing this again tonight. I appreciate your time. And I was happy that you asked about where the bridge would be relative to Morale Hall because we were able to put that schematic together. And it clearly demonstrates that it's not intrusive at all in Morale Hall area. It's 150 feet south across the parking lot, across existing landscaping. And we've made a significant effort to make sure that we can preserve as many of the mature trees and landscaping as possible. And to kind of bring you back, the special use permit is about an ADA compliant pedestrian bridge. We need to have a way for our students, faculty, and staff to move between the main campus and the gateway, and this bridge is the only way that they can do it. The university, as mentioned before, has demonstrated competency in architectural work across campus. We've received numerous awards, national awards, to reinforce that. We've also demonstrated exceptional care for our grounds. And again, we've been recognized at a national level for that. As mentioned before, we have a 34-degree angle in the bridge specifically to allow us to preserve the mature landscaping in and around the main campus across or south of Morale Hall. We've also presented this bridge as part of packages in five different public meetings. And I know that we've had this outstanding question about the Design Review Committee. Well, we've had, we've brought this forward multiple times, and really, the only feedback we had was around its distance or proximity from Morale Hall. And now we have a schematic to show where we are, and it is significantly away, and we are leaving in place mature landscaping. So I think it's important to recognize, this has been before public bodies five different times. We also realized that, we've looked at different ways to be able to have students, faculty, and staff move between the higher elevation of the main campus and the gateway. And this bridge is really the answer that we have. And we're really concerned. And we spent a lot of time making sure our campus is ADA compliant, whether it's doorways, whether it's classes, you know, whatever we do. And so this bridge is critical to make sure that, again, our students, faculty, and staff have access to both areas. And as you've probably noted in some of the earlier slides, the gateway, we're starting with this parking garage, but we're going to have an entire College of Business, and we're also planning for a couple Health Sciences buildings. So we're going to have significant traffic. And for a brief moment, I'll talk about the text amendment. I appreciated the amendment that was made because I understand why the complete elimination would be a problem. But what will eventually happen is Ninth Street, where this pedestrian bridge is, will feel very interior to the campus. It will, Ninth Street, the traffic will become lower and lower over time, or be minimized over time, because we're going to have so many students traveling back and forth. Because again, we're going to have a full College of Business, which includes classrooms, auditoriums, faculty spaces that will be south of Ninth Street, and we'll also have a couple of Health Sciences buildings along with a parking garage. So it's going to feel much more interior like it does in other places. And I know many of you probably went to the university. There are spaces that used to feel exterior to the university, but now they're interior. So we think this is a great solution. We've taken a lot of time and received much, a great amount of input to design this ADA compliant pedestrian bridge. So we're hoping that you can support this project tonight. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude the applicant's presentation?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a presentation from staff?
Anne Marie, are you there?
Anne Marie?
I'm here, just with a slow computer. Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. Bear with me while I share my screen. Presentation start. Can I get a thumbs up? Do you see my screen?
You're good.
Great, thank you. So as mentioned earlier, this is a request to construct a covered, open-air Skyway pedestrian bridge over Ninth Street, connecting the UNR Gateway Parking Garage to the UNR campus. The project is located within the mixed-use University of Nevada Regional Center zoning district. And the Planning Commission voted to continue this item from the May 20th Planning Commission meeting. RNC states that the Planning Commission shall make its decision within 30 days of the public hearing. This project has a master plan land use designation of public quasi-public and is located within the University District of the Downtown Regional Center. This project is in substantial conformance with the master plan as it supports regional initiatives for growth of the University District, as well as strengthening the physical and symbolic linkages between the UNR campus and downtown. Overall, staff received 15 public comments opposing the project and one public comment in favor. All public comments have been forwarded to the Planning Commission for review via email. Though comments are noted in the public comments related to potential impacts to Morale Hall as a historic resource, to make finding B, the Skyway must not materially impair the view of scenic resources such as significant mountains, significant natural resources, or significant historical resources officially recognized by the City of Reno. Morale Hall is over 100 feet north of the pedestrian bridge landing, buffered by both the parking lot and old growth trees that the applicant has committed to restore our saving, sorry. The applicant provided this rendering to show what the pedestrian bridge landing would look like from Morale Hall. Due to the existing elevation, change between Morale Hall and the proposed location of the Skyway, as well as the buffering of both the parking lot and old growth trees, staff find that it will not have a negative impact to Morale Hall. So there's an approximate location, and the site shows the elevation difference. Per RNC Skyway Design Guidelines, Skyways are to be reviewed by a Design Review Committee prior to appearing before the Planning Commission. On April 8th, 2020, City Council initiated a text amendment to specifically remove the Skyway Design Review Committee regulations from the Skyway Design Guidelines. As such, approval of the special use permit is contingent on the approval of the Skyway Design Guidelines text amendment by City Council. Our acting development director, Angela Booth, is available to answer any specific questions the commission might have about the progress of that text amendment. Per RNC, a special use permit for Skyways requires a public hearing by City Council. As such, the proposed motion to the commission is a recommendation to City Council. I am available for any questions that the commission or the public may have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Anne Marie. This is a public hearing. Before we go to public comment, I will ask the commission for disclosures. Commissioner Hawkins? You were on mute. You're still on mute.
How's that now?
Perfect.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins, no disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Previously visited the site and received and read the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
Same.
Commissioner Velto?
All the same.
Commissioner Levis?
Same.
Commissioner Taylor, I did receive and read the emails, and I'm familiar with the site. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
Yes, I have one person registered to speak on this item, Lori Ray. And we're bringing her in. Just one moment, please. Lori, are you there?
I am here.
Hi, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. Lori Ray, on behalf of Scenic Nevada. In the city code, it says the Design Review Committee, the DRC, will review Skyway plans to ensure a public perspective. And it also says, quote, "Prior to appearing before the Planning Commission, the Skyway plans and drawings will be presented to the DRC for their formal review." As you all know, the required formal review has not taken place. Therefore, this public hearing is premature. Hopefully, you'll do the right thing and continue it until either new Skyway regulations have been adopted by council or until the proposed UNR Skyway plans have been reviewed by the DRC. City Council did not remove the DRC from the Skyway Guidelines because of public outcry. In a narrowly approved 4-3 vote, the council showed their preference for a so-called carve-out compromise to allow this project to go forward without a DRC review, but that has not been formally approved or adopted in code. We don't think staff's condition pending city council outcome on the DRC changes anything. It's just a workaround. We believe it would be a violation of city code if the Planning Commission moves forward with a discussion and recommendation on the proposed UNR Skyway. As Planning Commissioners, you are our citizen legislators and the first line of defense to uphold our city codes and protect the community from badly-designed and sided projects like this one. Staff says you're required under code to hear this item because of a 30-day time limit, and we just heard UNR say they will not accommodate you and accommodate the code that way. I suppose the reason why is because it's going to hold up their construction start date. It's very important to them. If a vote is taken tonight, we think the project should be denied. We don't think you can make findings A or E for general special use permits. Finding A requires the project is compatible with the surrounding development. We don't think the modern utilitarian boxcar look of the proposed Skyway is compatible with Morale Hall, a 19th century building listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Finding E is meant to ensure that the proposed project will contribute to and enhance the character of the area in which it is located. Other than red brick, nothing in the design enhances the scenic and historic nature of the area. In fact, the proposed Skyway ruins the green belt gracing the front of Morale Hall and detracts from its unique historic setting. Further, we don't think you can make finding B of the Skyway Guidelines, which says the Skyway must not impair the view of scenic and significant historic resources. Whether Morale Hall is listed on the National or the city's Register of Historic Places does not matter. We think you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone in Reno that would argue Morale Hall is not a significant historic resource. The proposed UNR Skyway at 245 feet in length would cross over Ninth Street, then dog leg east to the east, barreling through the beautiful green belt, and stop near the front of Morale Hall, and argue this would impair the view of scenic and historic resources. We don't think that all of the options have been explored. Why doesn't dog leg west instead of east to be farther from the hall? Why not flop the building so that... Why not flop the building so that the parking lot is closer to the corner? All kinds of things could happen if there was a design review committee recommendation or review of this. So please follow city code, continue this hearing. If you don't, then deny this project because not all the findings can be met. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. I have no one else requesting to speak.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. We'll bring it back to the commission for questions. We'll close public hearing or comment too. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Hawkins, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Hawkins, you go first.
I've got a couple of questions, one being exactly how many trees are going to be destroyed because of this?
The impact is minimal and we looked at the layout. There's probably one or two, but they're the smaller ones that are in the middle of the grove. Far away, we've laid out the bridge to stay away from the large 56-inch mature trees.
That's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Veltow.
Yes, thank you. My question, I think, is for probably staff. I understand there's a condition for approval that's contingent on future approval of a skyway Design Guidelines text amendment. It was explained that there were going to be three different elements for that text amendment. I didn't hear that this project complies with those three elements, but I assume that they do. If the city council sent it back to us, could you maybe explain why this project complies with the proposed text amendment?
For the record, Angela Booth, I will go ahead and answer that since I was handling the text amendment. So there's three criteria that council outlined. The first one has to do with the dimensions of the skyway itself. And as long as the skyway is less than 12 feet in width and 15 feet in height. And that height is from the floor of the skyway to the top of the skyway. So it's not from the ground up. It's the actual height of the skyway itself. That's criteria one. Criteria two is as long as the skyway is outside of the boundary of our zoning district. That's the downtown regional center plan. And the third criteria is that it cannot cross a road, a public roadway, that's more than two travel lanes. So if Ninth Street was a four-lane road, this would not apply to this project. But in this case, all three criteria are met with this project. So if council chooses to move forward with that recommendation, this project would be exempt from the Design Review Committee.
Okay, thank you. And to kind of move to a different topic, I guess, could maybe the applicant speak to some of the ADA concerns and the need for putting in place this skyway bridge, given the need to get people from the garage to the campus? And kind of while you're discussing that, possibly discuss the general area and what the plan is more so for that area? And how this is consistent with that?
The gateway itself, as Heidi answered, alluded to earlier, is envisioned to have multiple future buildings. The parking structure happens to be the first one to come on. The gateway precinct area, as shown in the plan that Anne Marie displayed, as you can see, there is like a 30-foot rise in the hill. So in order to be able to get to the main campus plateau where the existing promenade is adjacent to Morale Hall, there's like a 30-foot drop of that hill. Some of the alternate ideas that were envisioned for there, if it was a switchback, you would probably be taking up most of the green space there to go back and forth. That's an ADA pathway there. Therefore, having the garage south and leveraging the vertical circulation of the garage itself through the elevators, reaching the, it's the fourth floor of the garage, but it's two stories up from the street level. The garage has, the north end of it is lower than Ninth Street. It's the fourth level of the garage. You have an elevation that you can then access all the way up the hill. And meandering and minimizing the impact to the vegetation and the large historical trees that are there. Which is why we chose to go that route. To address the comment, the public comment, if we went in the opposite direction, we would land very low down the hill off of Center Street, which is not ADA compliant. It's a very steep, it's a very steep climb street on that side. Did that answer your question?
That answers most of the question. I think the only part I'd like a little more clarification on is did you, whether, it sounds like there were other ways that you thought of to try to address the ADA concerns. Have you heard from people, though, that they want this? People that maybe need ADA compliant facilities?
Maybe Heidi could answer some of the topics that were discussed during the earlier phases from the master plan?
Michelle, can you unmute?
There, there, I think we're good. I was just unmuted, so thank you. So when we bought the land and the gateway, the intention really was to extend campus down to expand the academic space to really serve as a catalyst for redevelopment south of I-80. And we didn't really contemplate the difference in elevation until we started designing buildings. And we have a substantial number of students, faculty and staff who need ADA access. And if you were to walk around campus now, you will see that we have ramps, we have buttons when you go into doorways. There's just not a question as to whether or not we need the ADA access. It's just where is it going to be? The garage is a natural place to put it because that's where we, of course, have parking. We also will have an elevator. When you look towards other buildings, the College of Business is further down the line. It's actually planned right now to be on the northwest corner of Ninth and Center. And if we were to try to cross there, if you think about it, I mean, we again have the ore ditch, we again have green space. We again, we don't meet the elevation of the main campus. So whenever you go a little bit further west and you try to create a bridge, the bridge would end up being longer because it's flatter and you can't get to the main campus elevation. I think the siding of this bridge makes a lot of sense because the quad is a center of activity for our students. It's a beautiful place. And even if you think about like graduation, if people can park in the garage and they can cross over and see beautiful Morale Hall and then enter the quad, it makes a lot of sense to have a north-south byway for pedestrians. So I think the siding makes a lot of sense. We're also planning a couple of health sciences buildings. But again, if you were to try to create a pedestrian access across, it doesn't meet the elevation that we need. You would still land lower on the hill and we'd still have difficulty making sure folks can get up that hill. And it sounds like most of you have visited campus. And if you just walk up from Center Street or you take the historic steps, which are still in place and are not impacted at all by this pedestrian bridge, you know what the climb is. So we want to make sure our campus, the gateway and the main campus are fully accessible for ADA. It's critically important to us. And this is the solution that we came up with, given all of the other difficulties. We're going further west and the elevation changes and so forth. It makes a lot of sense. This is also the first building in the area. So to be able to have ADA access, we have to have the pedestrian bridge. So thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Veltow. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you. Ms. Cancer, while you were on that, you said this is the only option. Can you explain a little bit about, and something you talked about earlier, was really making that area internal to the campus? And in particular, could you kind of talk about, you know, if that's the case, if that's the future for that area, why is it that you want to kind of break up that open feeling and, you know, within the campus with the skybridge? And perhaps also, you know, just walking through the campus, there's a significant grade change, you know, running north-south. And there isn't really any other similar facilities within internal to the campus. So aside from an immediate need because you're putting in the garage for ADA purposes, you know, what's, it just seems to me that overall you'd want to preserve that kind of open feeling so you could get internal, you know, you have more options internally. If you're planning to move kind of Ninth Street as more of an internal corridor, for example. Thank you.
So thank you for your question. So, you know, if you were, it sounds like you've walked campus and most people have. When you look at campus and you look at sort of the hourglass shape of it, we have built as much as we can. As a matter of fact, if you were on the east side right now, you would see a new engineering building that we've excavated in along Evans, and it's really tight. We took out Get Your Library, we put in the Student Achievement Center. We built the athletic facility down below Lawler. So we have used the full capacity of the current footprint. The gateway is an expansion of that footprint. And again, it's part of our master plan that was passed in 2014 and city adopted in part in 2016 because we were asked and we partnered with the city and with RTC to serve as a catalyst, to really grow towards downtown and serve as a catalyst. This is really the only place where we can add parking. It's the only place, even very importantly, that we can add academic space. We do want to build a College of Business. And the current College of Business is also very central to campus. And so that's going to be nice because we can use that for other purposes. But if you think about a College of Business and the connection that it can have with downtown, placing in the gateway makes a lot of sense. We could have internships. We've talked about another innovation center being connected to it. So we want that adjacency to downtown. We want our students to add to the vibrancy of downtown. And that's part of the reason that we chose it. As far as the campus being open, the campus is very open, but you have to envision a larger campus. We've had this limitation working north from Ninth Street up through Lawler. And the campus really is becoming bigger and we need it to be bigger because we've been a growing institution for a long time. And it's a quality institution. So again, we have really filled our capacity of what we have. The gateway is critically important and we have to be able to have ADA access for all of our students, faculty and staff.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't arguing that the southern extension of the campus in the gateway is a bad thing. I think if you're going to do it, and you made some points about, you know, then Ninth Street really becomes internal in terms of really looking at ADA access and planning for the future. You know, it seems that there's a number of options that could be preserved without doing the skybridge. And, you know, because you're really expanding the campus up and down Ninth Street there. And, you know, what are the other possible options of getting people across and preserving the kind of the open feeling rather than having the skybridge across? That's the point I was trying to talk about.
Thank you. And as Francisco mentioned, the change in elevation is 30 feet. It is not a small change in elevation. It is a significant change. And we didn't want to carve up the hillside. So basically, if we were to put a switchback in to make it ADA accessible, you could take the green space that's north of Ninth Street and that would be carved up into a switchback, which would be significant given the change of elevation and the steepness of that slope. So it's not like you're going to have a couple of turns, you're going to go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So again, the ADA compliant pedestrian bridge is only 10 feet wide. The height off the ground, and I think sometimes when people start thinking about the skyways, they think of massive structures and tunneling. This pedestrian ADA compliant bridge is not very wide, it's not very tall, it's significantly off of the base. So if you were to drive under some of the overpasses on the freeway or some of the things, the skyways that you see downtown, they may be 13 or 15 feet off the ground and then they're extremely wide. This is 18, I think the minimum is 18.7 or 18.8 off of the ground. And it's 10 feet wide, it's open air with mesh. So we were very sensitive to the design and to make sure that it fit with the other architecture of campus and that it would enhance the entire area, not detract from it. We were looking to provide something that was sensible, but also really added and complemented what we're doing with the parking garage and the other structures on campus.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Other questions?
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question of Angela. Angela, since you were handling the text amendment and you saw the dialogue at council, I just wanted to clarify, because I've cut the Appendix B Skyway Design Guidelines up. And I'm just kind of trying to work through council's logic, which might be a dangerous endeavor, but just wanted to kind of figure out how they arrived at the 12-foot width, 15-foot height, the two-lane travelway, and how that set of parameters kind of distinguishes this, obviously this was sort of tailored towards this proposal, how that distinguishes this from other skyways that we have and why the Design Review Committee might be applicable to those, but not this? Was there a discussion about that?
I would say the bulk of the discussion on the specific criteria, I would say focused more on this project. And whether or not this particular project, and again, they were talking about a text amendment, so they weren't reviewing the special use permit at that time, but they knew that was kind of the impetus, right? The fact that we haven't had a skyway project in 20 years, this is the first one we've had. So it kind of brought up a discussion. The reason that these three criteria came out have to do with, they felt the Design Review Committee was warranted and needed. In this particular UNR case, they felt that it should be allowed to be reviewed without the Design Review Committee. So in looking forward, again, we don't have any other projects in the queue, so to speak, that have been submitted for skyways. They think they wanted to make sure that they weren't opening up other projects that maybe they wanted to make sure had the review process. So when we look at projects in the downtown area, most of those projects are casino projects where historically we've had skybuildings, not so much just skybridges, right? Smaller skyway projects, but actual skybuildings that are actually used for restaurant and casino space. So any future project that comes in that's in that downtown area would still have to go through that lengthy review process. The criteria on the size, the 12 feet wide and the 15 feet height, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion on that. But again, it was looking at this particular project, the UNR project. It's truly a pedestrian skyway. And it's narrow in terms of, the project that's before tonight is 10 feet wide. The criteria that they put forward was 12 feet wide. So that doesn't give a whole lot of opportunity for other projects that are going to be wide skyway projects. And so that kind of gave them a bookend parameter of projects that don't have a large significant impact in terms of space over our roadways. And then finally, that third one, the criteria about not being able to stand over public roadways that are wider than two-lane roadways. When we have our downtown area, for example, some of those roads are four lanes or three lanes wide. And they felt that the two lanes was a good parameter to put in there. So those are smaller roads and not major roads. Another example is the Atlantis. You know, we have skyways over Peckham, over Virginia Street. So those types of skyways wouldn't meet this criteria because again, they're
because again, they're wider and they cross over roads that are, um, more than two lanes. So kind of going through that thought process. And again, they, they were looking at UNR and they were looking at the, the, the UNR project, I think in the back of their mind, um, to make sure that UNR can move forward. But how do they make sure that other projects that maybe don't meet this very, you know, it's, it's, it's a unique situation because the DRC was never created. And that is, that is of no one's fault, right? It's been twenty years. It has never been created. Um, so they felt that there was value in UNR's project. They wanted to see them be able to move forward. So they tried to come up with criteria that was so specific that it was allow UNR to move forward, but not necessarily allow just any other project to be able to move forward without going through that review.
So if UNR wanted to, um, build a similar skyway to the one that goes over Virginia Street now by the, um, Davidson Academy, that would not meet these guidelines. Either they would have to go to the Design Review Committee.
And I, um, thinking about that, I think that that skyway is exempt for another reason. Um, I think there's actually a section in our UNR Center Plan Overlay District that would potentially exempt anything, a UNR project over Virginia Street from having to go. But take that out of the equation. Other projects, um, that are crossing Virginia Street, if Virginia Street in the areas where it's more than two lanes, which is pretty much all of Virginia Streets, would not be exempt. They would have to go through that Design Review Committee.
Okay, last question. So the, the span of the skyway, it wasn't necessarily the length of the span. It was just the, the width of the roadway. So in this case, we've got a, a span. It goes across the roadway, but it doesn't immediately go down to the other side. It continues to cross over the open space until it intersects the level grade up by Moral Hall. So the span is quite a bit longer than just the width of the two travel lanes plus the sidewalk or whatever. So was that considered in the discussion? Or it was just because we want to have, um, you know, Ninth Street kind of exempt from DRC that was the rationale?
Because Ninth Street is just a two-lane road, that was more of the thought process. If, um, again, if it was across Virginia Street, that would not exempt a skyway from having to go through the Design Review Committee. But because, um, Ninth Street is just a two-lane road, they added that criteria.
Okay. So in theory, uh, in, in theory, you could have a skybridge coming down from, over by Keystone and Reno High School, coming down from that bluff. And it could continue across, uh, California Street, Two-Lane Highway or Two-Lane Roadway, I think through there. And it could just continue going, spanning kind of until it hits the grade. I'm just trying to, you know, think through some examples here. I don't want to throw out hypotheticals, but that's, um, I'll save that for discussion. Thanks Angela for answering those.
If I could follow up, Madam Chair, just on one question for Angela.
Sure, Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. Angela, I just wanted to, uh, just to, maybe it's more of a clarification, but you, the City Council, um, it's not that the, the, the project would not happen if it went to the DRC. This particular project, it's just that it would be, the, the, the hearing would be delayed until we get a recommendation out of the DRC. Is that right?
Correct. And let, let me just take a step back. So the text amendment, let's, hypothetically, let's say that text amendment does not move forward. Um, and maybe the, they changed, council changes their minds and they want the Design Review Committee requirement to stay. Then the next step would be the city would create a Design Review Committee. Then the Design Review Committee would review the UNR project. And then that would have to go to Planning Commission and City Council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, just, I have another question, just kind of procedurally. So does anything that we could possibly vote on today affect the City Council's willingness to change anything with code or anything that happens with council? That's what I'm trying to understand.
The two, there's two separate processes. What, the one before you today is not the text amendment. That, that decision has already, um, been made by Planning Commission. That recommendation has already been given by Planning Commission. What's before you today is just the special use permit. City Council at a future meeting will be reviewing this special use permit. They will also be reviewing the text amendment, the skyway's text amendment. So the only thing before you today is to recommend to City Council, however you choose to, on the special use permit.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. Sorry, I keep coming up with questions. This is a question for Carl Hall. Carl, if it was such a substantial change to do redo the first reading, why isn't it coming, the text change coming back to, uh, Planning Commission? So we can see it and comment on it and make a recommendation on the sta- substantially revised text amendment?
No, I don't know that the text amendment is that substantial. We did make a, a change to it, but I don't think it needs to come back to the Planning Commission. I mean, it's, um, you know, it could have been a minor deviation or called a minor deviation. We didn't think it was significant enough that it had to come back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And I, I can add to that as well. The way it was agendized and so the way it went out, um, for public input was that City Council was voting to remove the Design Review Committee. So when we re-agendize it for a first reading to City Council, we'll make sure that it's agendized appropriately, that it's no longer to remove the Design Review Committee, but now to add those three criteria, um, that would be exempt from the Design Review Committee. So it still will go back again through that, um, first reading and second reading to City Council. We just want to make sure that it's agendized accurately to reflect how the, um, City Council has asked us to move forward with it.
Uh, I would just echo, uh, Commissioner Gowers' comments about, you know, the derivation of the exceptions um, have other, you know, impacts that, uh, which is what our job is to do, to, you know, consider those impacts and render, uh, advice to the City Council in forms of recommendation on the proposal. So you're talking about a substantial change from the, um, the prior text amendment was just to get rid of it to creating a set of exemptions um, without input of the Planning Commission. So just being territorial, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Hawkins, if you, you're on mute. Did you have a question? You are still on mute.
Now can you hear me?
Again.
Hello. Anyway, Commissioner Hawkins, I've got a, a concern about the, uh, thirty-foot of rise on this since it's ADA because everything that's ADA has got to be one-foot rise for every twenty-foot of, or, uh, one-foot of rise for every twenty-foot of run. And the, the math isn't working out for me. So I need the engineers there to explain that math and the ADA requirements.
Yeah, the, as, as noted, the, uh, bridge is the three spans. The first span across Ninth Street has a, is more flat, has a rise of, uh, less than two percent. The two upper spans are in the three and a half percent, uh, as you continue to rise. Um, but again, you're taking off of elevation twenty-one. We have a small pedestrian inside of the garage to make up another foot of grade where the walkway itself begins. And that's how we make the math all the way through.
That they're using the elevator to, uh, get most of their height to minimize any sort of run that they have to do.
Correct. You would take the elevator from the street up to level four of the garage. And then from that level of the garage, there's a ramp that accesses the bridge. Before you're even on the bridge, you have another foot of rise. And then span number one rises slightly less than two percent. Gets a higher grade. And then the other two spans continue to rise as we elevate to fifty at the top.
Next question. Is any steel going to be put in for reinforcement on the south side of this to accommodate a fruit, future bridge there?
A future bridge in which direction?
In the south. If I, if I came out of that building, uh, the parking structure and wanted to go across I-80, is there any steel or reinforcement that's going to be taking place before everything's buttoned up? Or is that the extent that you're going to go?
There, there's, 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 there has been no request or provisions from UNR for an additional bridge off of this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. I have a question, Angela, and maybe it's a clarification. The text amendment as it is now, it seems like those three criteria were put in place. I don't want to say specifically for this project, but with this project in mind, and I'm wondering, is there a timing sensitivity or a funding sensitivity to move this project forward in an expedited, expedited amount of time? Um, I'm just not familiar with what the reasoning might be or if I'm totally off base.
Uh, from, from, from UNR's perspective, the timing of their construction?
And from the council's perspective, because it seems like we went from a text amendment to get rid of the DRC. And then when the Planning Commission made our recommendation, the text amendment changed to create these three criteria that, um, eliminates this project from the DRC, if I understand correctly. So I'm just wondering if there's something, um, pushing this project forward that I'm, I'm not seeing in the staff report?
Uh, well, the, this application came in, I believe it was in February for the special use permit. Um, it was, it was definitely earlier this year. And so again, that, that was fault of UNR, simply a fault of, uh, we didn't realize that we had never created the Design Review Committee. It spent, we spent time trying to figure out who was on the Design Review Committee, only to find out that we, we couldn't find any records that it was ever created. So this special use permit unfortunately for UNR has been delayed on, on the city's fault, not on the applicant's fault. Um, they have plans in place to move forward with their project. The City of Reno does not review building permits on state-owned property. So that's a completely separate process. They, they, their building permits get reviewed through, um, other agencies. However, the skyway crosses the City of Reno right away. So they have to go through this process and get encroachment permits through the City of Reno. So at, at the point where we're at now, it's been in process, like I said, I think since starting in February. Um, City, City Council's initial direction was just to get rid of the Design Review Committee. The Planning Commission's recommendation was not to get rid of the Design Review Committee. Multiple members of the public and the design community also reached out to council and said, please don't get rid of the Design Review Committee. Council heard that information and I think they internalized that and said, you know, they, they will change their mind. They said, let's not get rid of the Design Review Committee. However, they also knew that UNR had a project, um, in a construction timeline that they are trying to meet. And they felt that the design of the UNR project, um, was something they were comfortable with and that they were comfortable moving forward with that criteria that would exempt this project. Um, now it's not so specific to say that only UNR's skywa- skyway is exempt. I think to Mr. Gowers' comments, um, it, it does open the city up to other projects also being exempt from a Design Review Committee. It doesn't change the fact that they still have to go through multiple public hearings. Um, but from the council, council comments, um, they wanted to see the UNR project be able to move forward and not be stalled. And that was because they were comfortable with the UNR design that again, it hasn't come before them yet, but everybody knows about it. It's a public document. There's been a lot of discussions about it. Um, they wanted to keep that project moving forward. And so they created this criteria that potentially would affect other skyway projects, um, but probably, um, would be very limited. The fact that we haven't had one in twenty years, i- it's not something that we see a lot of. If we are going to see a lot, we typically would see them associated with our casinos and with our downtown area. So this again gives us, um, I would say a, a, a level, level of comfort, so to speak, that if one of those skyway projects came forward, they would still have to go through that Design Review Committee. So while I can't speak for council, just based on the comments that they brought up, I think that was part of their rationale was why they were comfortable moving forward with this text amendment. Um, based on, again, hearing Planning Commission, they wanted to keep the Design Review Committee, which they agreed with, but kind of carving out this separate criteria that would allow UNR to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levis, I have a follow-up. Commissioner Levis, Angela? Angela, um, I guess I've got a question. I was thinking, this is a recommendation to City Council. Is that because of the second set of, uh, uh, the findings that we have to make are related to the skyway? And because normally an S U P is not just a recommendation. Is that the reason why?
In, in, our code requires that all skyway projects go to public hearings. So they do require review as a recommendation by Planning Commission. And all skyway projects do have to go back to City Council for review. That is definitely out of the order of what we normally do for special use permits. But our code has a couple, um, couple of unique circumstances where they require review by both Planning Commission and City Council. And skyways is one of those.
Okay, so, so for skyways, there is always a second level of review by a second body, even though the Design Committee carve out is, is in, probably going to be in place soon. And that would actually have been a third level of review for skyways?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anybody, uh, any commissioner have discussion that they want to start us off with?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Hawkins.
You have the floor.
I'm still concerned about the, uh, rise and run here. I've done calculations and even if we boost this, uh, parking garage as its elevation at forty-five-thirty, then we still have to worry about four hundred feet of run. It doesn't equate in my book here as far as where that's going to end up. So it looks to me like it's, they, they need more run for the footage there to stay compliant with ADA.
Would you like the applicant to respond to that?
I would, please.
Okay. Mr. Navarro, would you like to take that on to you?
We don't have an exhibit in the presentation today, but we'd be happy to follow up with Ann Marie and show you our calculations and our math. As I said, it, it, it's within ADA compliance.
Okay, I'd just like to see the numbers because what I'm writing out here for a rise and run doesn't equate.
Right. It, it's, the bridge itself, there's three spans. Uh, they're not all exactly seventy-six feet. First, first span seventy-six feet, next span seventy-six feet. The last span is a slightly, uh, uh, shorter. But we're starting not from elevation twenty. We go up from elevation twenty up to the fourth floor. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I can't do the math in my head right now. But I'd be happy to set up a graphic and present it to Ann Marie.
Commissioner Levis, I'll call. Um, I guess, uh, I would ask if, what happens if, uh, if the engineering calculations are wrong? Does the city, would the university have to go back and basically rebuild the thing? Or, or, because it wouldn't, surely wouldn't just fly being, uh, non-ADA compliant if, if, if calculations are wrong?
It's, it's not. I can, I can assure that the math is correct.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's currently in plant check by both State Fire Marshal and, uh, State Public Works.
Um, if, if I may, commissioners, the engineering calculations are not part of my S U P review. That would be reviewed during building permit application. And as stated as a UNR project, that will go to state fire marshal, and they wouldn't get approved for a building permit if the calculations aren't correct.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I'm sure if I could. My concern is more of a procedural one. And I think we kind of went through this the last time we saw these two together a few weeks ago. And my concern is that the S U P is before us, but it's contingent on a text amendment that is contingent on the council's, you know, comfort level with these three criteria. And seeing this S U P again, I just feel like it's a very kind of mixed up scenario that we're doing here. And it's frustrating because I don't understand why, when we, as a city, identified that it didn't go to the design review committee, why we didn't just set up the design review committee like we have in code, have them review it, just ban the design review committee. The recommendations come to planning commission, it goes to council, and we move on. This whole text amendment process has just been, in my opinion, a complete disaster. And planning project by project with text amendments to our code and to our master plan is, in my opinion, is a terrible precedent. Because what, and I think Commissioner Marshall alluded to this. What happens is you make these quick decisions based on individual projects, and you're not thinking about the ramifications for other future projects. So when another project comes down the road, they are exempt because it's only a two-foot wide roadway. But the span of a bridge could be 300 feet long, even though it crosses a two-lane road. The Atlantis example, the new one that they built, I don't know, it's not super new anymore, to the convention center, it crosses Peckham. Peckham's a two-lane road. I guess it has a turn lane. So it technically is exempt because it's three lanes. But then it goes over a parking lot for another at least 100 feet. So making these quick, quick decision text amendments is just not, in my opinion, good planning. So I cannot make the findings specifically related to the master plan. We have a set of a code that we're supposed to be following, and we're trying to write ourselves out of it. So my recommendation to city council will be, don't move forward to the S U P until you get either the text amendment squared away, a well-thought-out process, or you go send this project through the DRC. Thank you.
Commissioner Gowers?
This is Commissioner. Yes, thank you. So I'm a little concerned because I think we're punishing the applicant for the procedural posture by which this gets to us. We don't currently have the text amendment before us. We would hypothetically be passing this project conditioned on the city council doing something that's entirely within its power to do. There is nothing procedural that allows us to think about the ramifications of a choice as to how the text is amended, or whether or not they carve out certain types of Skyway projects. That's not before us. And we shouldn't punish the applicant because of how the city council has decided to present a question for us. We're voting solely on this project and not on the potential ramifications of actions by the city council. So I think we should stick within the purview of what's presented to us. And we can make a record and tell the city council that procedurally, we disagree with how it's handled. We don't like the fact that we were moved from the conversation for a text amendment or for an exemption from a requirement to have a board oversee the design of the Skyway. But I really don't think we should hold this against the applicant. We should be looking at the product itself. And from what I'm seeing in this project, it makes a lot of sense. There's a pressing necessity anytime you're dealing with an ADA issue. And if they're telling us that it's ADA compliant, I'm not nearly qualified enough to say that the math is wrong or that there's something incorrect with the way that they are designing the project. Now, the big issue for me has always been moral hall. And I think the pictures that they presented today were quite clear that the way that the project is developed, if anything, highlights the history of the university. When you exit the walkway, the first thing you see is the central location on campus in this historical building. That's something that is beneficial with this project, and it seems to comply with everything else. It complies with the way that they're going to build the rest of the area. It complies with the master plan, assuming that they abide by the condition. I really don't see any problems with how we're evaluating this, other than that we're concerned with the way it procedurally was presented to us, and that was not the applicant's choice. So I really think that you should reconsider trying to hold that against the applicant when the project otherwise seems like a very good project and seems to comply with all the S U P requirements.
Thank you, Commissioner Velto. Mr. Levis?
Have we moved more into discussion? Is that what I'm gathering from questions? I guess that's it. I would say kind of to Commissioner Gowers comments on the procedural aspect of it, there have been other projects that we've had contingent conditions on. And I think that we may not like the particular contingency because we recommended not to disband the design review committee, and it got tweaked differently. But we have done other contingent conditions, so I don't have a problem with that. And I guess my follow-on to that and to Commissioner Velto and the historic, I like the idea that it opens up moral hall and the view to that, which is tough to see from the street as it is anyways. I think it maybe even enhances it in some ways, as Commissioner Velto said.
Thank you, Mr. Levis, or Mr. Levis. Other comments? Discussion? Mr. Marshall?
Thank you. I think I'm in general agreement with Commissioner Gowers comment. And Commissioner Velto, I would just have to disagree with you that we're holding this against the applicant. You know, the applicant is pushing here. The applicant, we could have had the DRC already, you know, most likely, and gotten it done and gotten a review. And then we would have had a basis upon which really to judge a compliance with the architectural guidelines and all the, you know, things we talked about last time when we were talking about whether or not it's a good idea to get rid of the design review committee. And so I don't really see we're holding against the applicant. I'm also, I am troubled by the process. And yes, Commissioner Levis, we do, I mean, almost all of our permits are conditioned in some aspect or another. But what we're really doing here is we're conditioning against a future code change. So we're allowing an applicant to come before us and have us act on a project or proposal that is contrary to code. And that, to me, is the problematic point. It's the type of condition that we're talking about here and what it's conditioned on. And so that, that, you know, is, will be part of my reason why I won't support moving forward with or recommending approval of this condition, excuse me, the permit. You know, I also feel like there are, it is difficult to make some of the findings, particularly scenic resources, and we contribute to the enhancement of views because of its obstruction of views when you're traveling north on Ninth Street, you know, and particularly the openness of that view. I also, you know, I'm not certain if this is a legit basis for our decision. But, you know, really the city, excuse me, the university's plans for the area, to me, are inconsistent with trying to close it off with this kind of, with this kind of ADA access. Instead, you know, there's a whole fringe there on Ninth Street and moving people from south of campus or south, the new part of campus extension, excuse me, that would be, yeah, north to south. I think there's lots of different options, as the university has demonstrated on many other areas on the campus where they have to deal with the same, you know, rise and gradual rise, or maybe not as steep in that amount of footage in that one particular area. But I think their creative planning and creative minds can come up with a different solution. So that's, those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Any other comments?
Commissioner Levis, I have a few other comments. My first comments were in response to Commissioner Gower and Commissioner Velto's. I guess one thing I was thinking is I think that maybe the council's found an elegant solution to, with the exceptions, and that being because I see a significant difference between an elevated crossing and additional usable space. I think that there's other elevated crossings around town that I think work, and they're less impactful versus some of the casino space, which they got slot machines and restaurants, and they're getting additional real estate out of it. Not that I think those are necessarily bad, but I think they'd need a higher level of scrutiny because they're much more impactful. But I like that carve out the exceptions that they've made. And one reason, I can make all the findings myself, but one in particular that I think that this actually enhances is finding D, traffic. And I think that Ninth Street, and as the campus expands, there's going to be a lot more people crossing that street. And I think that a Skyway, an elevated Skyway across is a good way to get people across without impacting the traffic. And I think that on the other, the other corner of campus, you come down Sierra Street at certain times of day, all those students are crossing, and it's just very even dangerous to some degree. Depending on the time of day, when they're late for class and they're hustling, and there's all kinds of traffic trying to get to work. I think that a Skyway over the walkway, maybe not a full Skyway, but a elevated walkway would probably help that situation. So I think that as the campus grows, this is, this is going to become even more important.
Commissioner Velto?
Yeah, I, I kind of echo Commissioner Levis's thoughts. One thing I would say for the people that might be in opposition, I kind of have a question for you, which is really, what value do you see an oversight, an architectural oversight board adding to this project? It is extremely aesthetically pleasing. There were marked multiple architectures, architects on this project for the university. I guess I'm just struggling to see the, it seems like the spirit of that requirement is not being served by trying to force the university to kind of backtrack. And if the city council issued a directive and said that there might be an exemption for this project, I just struggle to see why we'd hold them to a law that might not be in effect at the time this reaches the next stage. And if it's in effect, the project itself cannot happen. Well, I guess I'm curious on your perspective on that.
Commissioner Velto, I'll offer my perspective. I think that's exactly the kind of danger that I'm talking about, is the perspective that you're offering. So if every time a developer or anyone else comes in with a proposal that feels that the proposal is inconsistent, or that the plan or the code is doing them an injustice, then we're going to say, well, that's not really what we mean in our code. Let's, let's change it. Let's tweak it a little bit. That's, that's what I hear you saying.
The applicant didn't say that, sorry. That wasn't the applicant's words. That was the city's words. We said that they weren't, that the DRC, the applicant didn't come forward and ask us to get rid of the DRC.
Okay, then, then that's the precedent that we're setting as a city, that we can just, well, do text amendments every time we want to change something, whether the applicant asks us to or not. We think it's a good idea for the city, let's, let's change our code every time.
Yeah, Commissioner Gower, I, I hear you on the, on the concern with having interest groups be able to manipulate code whenever they, whenever it's necessary to achieve a goal. I hear that, and I totally hear that concern. That's not something that I'm advocating for. But I, but equally, I'm not advocating for a hardline rule where we look at a, at a way of navigating kind of zoning law and regulations where we say it's never possible to accommodate for a project when the rationale for the rule shouldn't exclude the project. So I'm not saying that we should need to, I don't disagree with you. I think that I respect your opinion. I do think that we should be careful in the way that we carve out exceptions to law and city ordinances. But I really think we should look at the product itself in deciding whether or not an exception should be made. And I struggle to see the problems with this project.
Can I respond to Commissioner Velto? Madam Chair? Thank you. Excellent question, Commissioner. I think I, the way that I respond to your specific question that you earlier stated is that, you know, you ran, you came to a conclusion about the attractiveness of a particular structure. And it's your conclusion, based on your experience, which I share, of going to undergraduate and getting some degree that's probably relatively useless, and then going to law school and getting something that's probably more useful. It is not necessarily, and I go back to those touchstones of the, of the, you know, the Skyway appendix. It's not particularly looking at those really kind of questions, relatively sophisticated questions of design and integration and all those things. That, for me, that's the purpose of the design view committee. So, and to apply those, to look at those criteria and render an opinion, almost like a professional opinion, because there are architects, landscape architects, I can't remember all the others in there. But that, rendering that, those professional judgments as to the application of those standards to the proposal before us. And then we base, ultimately, we either base, we don't base any, we may base a recommendation on that, and then that goes to the city council. But that, to me, is, so, you know, we may have significantly different opinions as to the beauty of that structure and whether it meets the criteria or not. Obviously, scenic Nevada disagrees with you. And, and so it's a way of going, of going out, having, you know, a process that incorporates an amount, a specific amount of public input, and, to my mind, professional input, and then gives us a basis to make those design determinations, other than just our own biases of what we like, you know, aesthetically like. Ultimately, we apply our own judgment based on the information before us. That, to me, is my, would be my response to why, even with this project, in particular this project, because it's, you know, there's a lot of powerful interest trying to, you know, get, for some reason, trying to avoid going this, you know, bringing this to the design review committee. I don't think it's any nefarious. I think it's just because it might, it might otherwise cause more delay than, you know, people would like. But so it's, that, just my thoughts on the importance of that committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. I just have one of those not very useful degrees. But, you know, I, I would say that WD Architecture and Engineering has some of that expertise and experience to be able to do this design. And, and it's not, I mean, it seems like we're saying here was a, it was a class project that was brought before the commission. That's not the case. These are very reputable professionals of engineers, of architects, of landscape architects that have put together those design. And I imagine other designs for the university that have won several awards. It's not like, you know, this isn't a very thoughtful or sound design. The process that we have been dealt with, I agree, is a little bit messy. We were asked to vote on a DRC a while back, and we decided that we wanted to keep the DRC. Well, when it got to council, it seemed like that wasn't the answer that they wanted to hear. So they changed the rules a little bit to move this project forward. That's project forward. That's a process that we need to work with council on, in my opinion. We're looking at a recommendation of a special use permit to council. That's what we're looking at. And, you know, when we look at the historical views, if you look at Morrell Hall as from the picture that they showed us, the first thing you see is a parking lot. There's a parking lot there with cars and they're spensing. That's more obtrusive than the skywalk that you see 200 feet away. So I have a hard time not being able to make that finding. Are we, are we done with discussion at this point, or should we, are we ready for, to entertain a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. If you'll entertain one.
Please.
Sure. In the matter of case number LDC 20-00047, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve a special use permit subject to conditions. And I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, I'll second that and I can make all the findings.
Thank you. Michelle, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Alex Velto?
Yeah.
Paul Levis?
Yes.
John Marshall? John Marshall?
No.
Ed Hawkins?
No.
Peter Gower?
No.
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes. So it looks like we have a tie and that is a technical denial. Or actually, is there any more discussion? Sorry. Nope. Okay. Is that accurate that it's a tie vote, technical denial?
That's correct. A 3-3 vote is a tie, which is a technical denial.
This is a recommendation, Commissioner Levis. This is a recommendation, is that a denial to recommend, recommendation to deny?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We can bring the chair back in. Chair Johnson?
Yes, just one moment. Hello, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, but I need to go make my mother dinner before she throws a frying pan at my head.
Commissioner Marshall, I've been waiting all of this time to get back to see your pretty faces, and now you're going to leave me.
I, I am, I think you're going to get over my departure. Something tells me that.
Noble car.
Well, thank you for letting me know.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everyone.
Thank you.
See ya.
Okay, moving on in the agenda. So item 5.2 has been pulled from the agenda. Is that correct, Angela?
That's correct. That will be back on July 1st.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move on to item 5.3, case number LDC 20-00060, the Stead RV Storage. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, Michelle?
Yes, just one moment. We're bringing the applicant's representative in. John, are you there? Oh, there he is. Okay.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Are we good?
Yes, we have, you have 15 minutes.
I, I know you did. There was, if you could bear with me for just a second, we have a couple other people. There's Vic, he's smiling. He is the man. Oh, he's doing the Zoom wave. Okay, and how about Colin Hayes? Let's get him in here. If you guys can just bear with us here, you know, it isn't a perfect world. I'm going to share screen and we're going to get this thing going. Is all of the team here?
Yes, John, go ahead and you can start your presentation.
Okay, well, the commissioners are remarkably silent, so I don't know what's going. It's as though I can't.
We're not cutting into your time.
Thank you.
We're just going to let you have it, John.
Okay, thank you. That's great. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like to introduce, you saw Vic Booker. It looks to be, and that's not the most phonetic name you see, the developer in Nevada Land Enterprise. Vic Booker is with us. Some people pronounce it otherwise. Our architect is Audrey Day-Lacruz with CWX. She is not part of the, what do you call it, presenter, or I forget the fancy term we use. And then also Colin Hayes is with us this evening with Summit Engineering. As typical, I'll be brief. I think there's some important slides I would like to go through, though. So I think this commission is very well informed of this location, the site. There's been a lot going on around here in recent years. And the subject of this SGP is residential adjacency. So the, the thing that fires it up, that triggers it, is the MF 30 to the south, which is not developed yet, but recorded map and single-family development progressing to the north of, to the site. And then, of course, across the street is that Habitat for Humanity, multifamily 30, but that is not an occupied residential area yet. So here's the site. Couple of things to point out in context. Staff pointed out the fire station across the street. You can see with my cursor here, a church, the most, the closest multifamily is Kitty Corner up there at the northwest corner of Cocoa. And, and then there's that Habitat for Humanity, future single-family to the south, and the approved e-commerce prologis development budding on the east. What we have agreed to with staff, and we do in fact meet or agree to all the eight conditions as written in the staff report, is that this landscaping on the west side will be done with Phase 1, and this landscaping adjacent to the front of the site will be done in Phase 1 improvements, just to offer a little bit of screening and mitigation to the storage area. The brown part, which is distinguished from the gray, just so you know, because this is RV and some personal storage. So these, this brown area is, is covered, RV storage, covered RV storage here. And then this area here, smaller portion of the site development is the, you know, a personal and mini storage area. Then, of course, the office is adjacent to the site. Ex adjacent to the front of the site there, as you would expect, where there's a little more intensity on the arterial street. Phasing, I wanted to touch base with the commission. So you can see Phase 1 progressing again from Echo Avenue. And then I show the wraparound with those landscape improvements over on Mount Vida, again, for screening and really giving it a complete look, even though phasing will go on for several years. By the way, as best guess goes, just to have a plan, we all need to have a plan for these kind of things. The, the idea here is Phase 1 soon, and then market absorption dictates the rest, of course, Phase 2 and Phase 3, somewhere in the 2025 build-out timeframe is what Mr. Booker has projected. There's the architecture, so you can just see elevations. I think one of the best things done, in my opinion, in what we're offering here, is, you know, the extent of screening. And it's obviously a very low-intensity, high-compatible, high-compatible use, like just, but just about any measure. So you look at the visual part, you have, you know, if I recall right, RVs can go up to 12 or 13 feet in height. So it kind of sits there like a one-story building. And so we have nine-foot-tall wall with a lot of articulation and some variation in the textures there, and then the monuments that are spaced in between. So it gives it a nice little breakup, looking at it from any particular elevation. A little more zoom on that. You can see the sign elevation. Again, this is the one facing only the one sign, facing the arterial and at the, at the, at the frontage there. Again, you'll see the nine-foot-tall wall, and then you see the eight-foot masonry in between those, those panels. And there's a little more, a little more detail on the building, you know, pretty typical restricted hours of operations. You guys saw that in the staff report. And very low intensity again, but full-time working hour type of arrangement for the people who are running the, running the program here. And I think that is all that I have. So I'm going to go to the site plan that shows the biggest portion of the site. If you have any questions on detailed engineering stuff or anything for Mr. Booker or myself, I am glad to participate. We all are. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. We'll get back to you after we get a presentation from staff. I believe I saw Heather Beep in here. So, good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Chair Johnson and Planning Commissioners. Heather Manzo, Associate Planner for the record. And John did a great job of outlining the requests that's before you this evening. This is a special use permit for residential adjacency to both the west and to the south of the property. And as illustrated in the proposed elevations in the landscape plan, those frontages will be landscaped and have that decorative fence installed with that Phase 1 as condition number seven states. Also, because the sign would be facing the residentially-zoned property, condition number eight is recommended to have, if it is illuminated, to have that illumination turned off at a certain time in the evening so it doesn't pose a nuisance for future neighbors that will be located across the street. Staff is recommending approval of this request as of 5:00 PM this evening. When I last checked, I hadn't received any phone calls or emails from the public on this project. And staff was able to make all the findings. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Before I open it up for the public comment, I will ask commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins, visit the site, talk with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Velto?
No disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, I have visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor?
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures.
And Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures from me either. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak or public comment on this item?
No, I did not receive any request to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Well, then with that, I will bring it back to the commission for any questions of the applicant or staff. Who'd like to get us started?
Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yeah, this one's for staff. Yeah, Heather, need to know the hours of operation there. I didn't see it in my packet.
Sure, thank you. The hours of operation were listed under Finding A, I believe. And so they've proposed office hours from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, while they would also be proposing gate-controlled customer access from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And those are the standard operating hours. They're allowed by code. This doesn't include a special use permit for 24-hour operations at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Additional questions? Comments or discussion? Commissioner Gower?
Good question. Heather, can you clarify the wash, wash pad? I, I was confused as to whether it had a wash pad or it didn't, and if it did, what the requirements were for that.
Yes, thank you. The site plan did identify a wash pad, and we did receive a comment, I believe, from Environmental Control noting that there are some code requirements at the time of building permit, should they choose to include that as a part of their plan. And I believe that is for a grease interceptor to treat the, the dirty water before it heads out into the system. And so that is just a standard code requirement that would be reviewed at the time of building permit if they choose to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Additional questions? Any comments or a motion on the project?
Commissioner Hawkins, make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. The floor is yours.
In the case of LDC 20-00060, Stead RV Storage, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. I have a motion. Looking for a second.
Commissioner Levis, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Levis. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Velto?
Yes.
Commissioner Levis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gower?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Johnson, I also vote yes. So motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will close our public hearings and bring it back for item six, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Turn this one over to Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Angela, feel free to jump in too, but I wanted to give an update. At the Regional Planning Governing Board meeting last Tuesday, the governing board found the Daybreak project, you remember that one, in conformance with the regional plan. It was a split vote, six to three. There was some lengthy discussion, about four hours of it. And that was the, so the RP, the Regional Planning Commission, that was the appeal of the Regional Planning Commission's decision to find that in conformance. So it went to the Regional Planning Governing Board, and they, as my understanding, upheld that determination. Angela, that's the regional process. Maybe you can jump in where it goes from there on the city side.
We have one more meeting in front of city council, and that's for certification. Because this is a PUD, it does require final certification by city council. And that meeting is scheduled for July 22nd.
Okay. Great. Moving on to item seven, staff announcements. Angela?
No, just from a city council perspective, we did have a city council meeting last week outside of the Skyways text amendment discussion. The other big agenda item was the Meridian project, and that project was before you several months ago. It was actually scheduled on appeal for city council in March. And then COVID happened, and it's been just basically on unlimited continuance. But we did get it back in front of city council. City council did approve all six phases of Meridian. They modified quite a few conditions and added some extra conditions. So at this point, it is, all six phases have been approved. Outside of that, just from a staffing perspective, I wanted to let everyone know that Jeff Borchart, who was a previous city planner, is actually back with the city of Reno. He is now our new principal planner. So he will be tasked with all of our long-range duties. So anything related to the master plan, some of these text amendment initiatives that council has asked us to move on, he will be working on that. When we get to the, the stage after the zoning code updates adopted, we're going to start reaching out to the neighborhoods. He'll be leading that as well. So you'll be seeing a lot more of him in a very different capacity than current planning. So I'm super excited to have him on board.
Okay, well, good news. Appreciate hearing that things are moving forward in a number of different ways. That's great. Okay, item number eight, commissioner suggestions for future agenda items. Nobody's waving at me, so I will move on to item nine, public comment. Nobody's waving at me, so I will move on to item nine, public comment. Michelle, did we have any requests to speak for public comment under this item?
No, I do not have. Anybody registered for a public comment?
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I will move to request adjournments. All right, all those in favor? Good night.
Night.